All of these.
We actually don't have the chair yet. Would anybody be willing to chair the number?
I can start. I mean, notice is hereby given that the planning and zoning commission of the city of Alpine will hold a special meeting at 5:30. I need to read all this. Yeah, 5:30 on Monday, September 26th, for the purpose of considering the attached agenda. This notice is posted in pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act. Action items approved at this meeting will be considered by the city council for final action. So I'd like to call this meeting to order. And do we have a quorum? Do we have any public comments?
Yes, we do.
The public hearing, do we go, do we listen to those?
Yeah, we can go ahead and do the public comments first.
Okay.
And then it's going to be two minutes over thing and whoever would like to make comment. I guess if you want to go ahead and just have the public comments be made at the presentation of the.
Okay, here comes, here comes our chair. So we have called the meeting to order and but we're gonna, I'm so glad you're here. And so we do have public comments, but they have requested that they want, they would like more information before they publicly comment. Oh, no, I want you to do it.
Alright, so we're going to.
So we're on, I have not announced, so we're here on number two.
Thank you very much. Okay, Gio, would you mind reading number three?
Yes, number three is public hearing to obtain citizen review and comment regarding a replat application to allow applicant force Apple 118 LLC a replat for the purpose of consolidating lots for commercial retail development. The property in question is located at 1911 North State Highway 118. The record property owner is force Apple 118 LLC.
Thank you very much. Okay, you want to know before approval of minutes from the previous meeting from July 25th? I'll open up if any commissioner has anything they'd like to add to those minutes or any comments. Anyone?
I do not have anything to add.
Can I get a motion then to accept the minutes as is?
I'll make a motion to accept the minute as is.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor of accepting the minutes from July 25th, please indicate by saying aye. Say nay, ayes have it. Okay, discussion items. Discussion between commissioners and city staff regarding procedural items, questions, and or recent planning and zoning related items. I'll open it up to any commissioner who'd like to speak on this.
I do have one question. On the the website, I was looking at zoning this afternoon. Do we have an updated map? It looked like it kind of cut off in some areas, but it could have been user area error.
So you're talking about the zoning?
Right.
The zoning map hasn't been updated since 2013 and it is on one of the priority items for the permission to review.
Okay.
So basically, we will need to start collecting every ordinance that change the zoning and work towards updating the map. As I did, just want to mention that as far as the map and the size, the way that you view it, it should be coming up normally where you can see the whole thing. You might try like control in the minus sign to.
Well, I was trying to look up on when we get back to the discussion exactly with the location of this particular item that's on the agenda for today.
Okay, so this one that is on the agenda for today isn't, it wasn't in city limits when the map was made because we recently annexed that property.
Okay, so it's recently been annexed. Okay.
We found it C2 upon that.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. And can you let everybody know what C2?
C2 is neighborhood commercial.
Just a commercial district. Okay. So, okay, so when it was annexed, who did did planning and zoning vote that it was commercial district who voted on? How did y'all decide?
So annexation goes through to city council. We have a certain amount of time that it needs to be approved or taken off set by state law for that one. Basically, the council passed a resolution initiating the proceeding. We held all the proceedings at the council, which was two readings.
And when when was that? A long time ago or recently?
Very long.
Okay.
It was very recently, maybe in the last three months.
Yeah.
Really?
None of us were notified.
None of us were notified of the annexation. Was it just that corner from Fourth Street to 118?
So you know where Alpine Auto?
Yes.
Yeah, it's that property is the only thing not in city limits on that block. The rest was.
Street, just that lot, not.
That lot is not annexed. So as far as the street is concerned, that wasn't annexed either.
So is Harriet Street, here, here's where this confusion is. It's like some point it got annexed and nobody, the the neighborhood was not informed of it. So we want to know when exactly that annex was and what the borders are of that annexation.
Okay, I have a map that came in review. We did post it in the paper and followed all publication guidelines. It's provided by state law and we have public hearing.
For the annexation, what about the the zoning?
It's only for that property particularly and that property is in line when it essentially that zoning is in line for being in a residential area put on like it means it could allow either residential, correct me if I'm wrong, guess, or.
When was it, when was it zoned that C2?
With when it was annexed property was.
Three months ago.
Was was was, is there no is there no demand for notification of adjacent property owners?
It would be with the annexation proceedings, which again, we did follow the headlines to publicize it in the paper on our website. And I have the map if you'd like to see.
I would like to see it. I have a question because I was in a traffic nurse and I come back and forth. So every time I come back, it seems like everything is changing. What I'm hearing from them is something I'm not understanding. When I was told on one of my lots that I want to put duplexes on, I was told I had to go physically to my neighbors to talk to them before I came to the planning committee, before the planning committee went to city council. Now I'm hearing they got bypassed? Is that what, is that what I'm understanding? Because I have to go door to door.
Well, whoever told you that, I'm not too sure how long ago it was.
It was a month ago. Jessica, when did we, when we were doing the the pickups? For the so-called West Center?
It was a few months ago.
Then at the same time, pretty much the same time, that's it. Well, that's what I'm not understanding though, because if you have got bypassed, I'm trying to figure out why the hell I gotta go. Sorry, I don't hear this. I grew up with Marine Corps fathers, sorry. Why am I having to go to my neighbors? Before I go to you guys, before I go to city, before it comes to city council. I'm not understanding.
Who told you that?
The people at the permits and whatever the little dude did, whoever I talked to.
I don't know who that was.
Yeah, the only two employees that wouldn't really be all Christ do that are in this room.
Who's the building?
Yeah, I have to walk you.
So anybody else, I mean, they they wouldn't really have any business speaking about building permits.
But I think that's a question like the main one. So if you are annexing, that doesn't.
So we followed chapter 43, local government code annexation on area on request. So chapter C3 and we followed all the guidelines and that it was checked by our city attorney and we followed the publication.
And so and so those guidelines are different than a a traditional like.
So the law recently changed in 2019 as far as the authorities for cities to end it. And you have to have property owner consent. They got more strict and we followed that.
Okay, so I'd like to summarize. So what we're here today about the lots that need to be replatted and three months ago, I proposed to the owners of was.
Excluding the Alpine Auto Shop. And they were to attach you with whatever.
Was the zoning changed at that time?
She knows it wasn't.
Yeah, can we see a map of this?
I can go grab.
I'd be curious to see exactly what we're looking at here.
Really nice.
The Dodson Home Police, right? Where they have the car. Did he say that they did?
That didn't say that to the. That is. Something that's right, that the auto.
It's not in between and that.
The annex something, it sounds like they annexed something and they left me to say that the auto shop. Okay, so there's something in the middle.
Reading.
And then so can I have it? Since we've already, you've read the, I just have a question. So today what we're voting on is the consolidation. So these lots have been annexed.
Yes.
They are now, they, and in that annexation process, they were identified as C2 by council, not planning the zoning. And so we're voting today to consolidate these lots to combine to have one large commercial development. Is that what I'm understanding?
That is correct.
Okay. And and then we'll, can I still continue to ask questions? Okay, so what is the size of each of these lots? Is it one city block?
It's essential.
So a city block is like the size of Morrison, Morrison's true value is a city block. So this is a pretty substantial block for a substantial, what type of businesses going in there? The Dollar General?
Another one?
Yep.
And we don't want that.
Right, well, I mean, okay, so it's a big big development. Okay.
It looks like a lot of that area out there where we are is zone for mobile home lots. So it looks like they're combining about 10 mobile home lots. So standard mobile home lot is what 54 by 1, 164?
I don't know, is that?
Okay, because ours is 54 by 157.
And are the, so are the neighbors concerned? Can, I know that y'all wanted to get more information before you spoke. So are you concerned because of the, because it's a commercial development or the size? Is that, I just want to make sure I understand.
The concern is that the bigger the lot, the bigger bigger business they can put in there.
Interesting, right?
The bigger the business, possibly the more traffic will go through there.
Yes. And yeah.
And the more trash and the light pollution. Nobody wants to look into bright lights. This is literally right next. What is happening?
Yeah, so there's, so light pollution is a is a concern and I assume that there's also a concern about the businesses that we have here. That's just a, could be a concern about.
Well, it's also the nature of that particular business in competition in a small town that already has enough dollar stores to build in a big city. These these type of stores are not good competition for, I don't know, the only grocery store that we have. And if we lose it, good God, you know, I mean, I'd like to have a department store, but another dollar store is sort of a slap in the face.
Well, just, am I wrong with the original? When you go back to like 1991, like the planning and zoning, the plan was that commercial would stay east and west of the city and that was more of a residential that would, the intent was north would be more of a residential development and not commercially.
You're speaking, but with zoning, the way that it's been going, we have commercial going north and south on Highway 118 and we've got east and west. And the long term comprehensive plan is to to continue that commercial through the highway, highways going north and south and then also, and we have businesses growing towards the south of us right now that are on commercial and same with going north. So I can only see the highways being because they are main ways in and out of town that the first lots on in on the outsides would be considered annexed. I'm not annexed, but rezoned in the future. Just with the way Alpine is going to grow. I don't see that not happening.
Right. And would it be advantageous for Alpine? I mean, if we have commercial lots over there, and sorry, I'm talking so much. I just have a bunch of questions about this. Okay. Would we want one big development or we keep them? If it is going to be zone commercial, would smaller things be better since, I mean, because I thought the light pollution was a valid. Right, we have a dark skies ordinance, but the but the signs for the big box stores don't comply.
They do comply.
They do, they have to comply.
Information when they build their building that they have to follow that dark side ordinance. On any new builds and anything that's already preexisting has to come into compliance in the next five years.
I thought that if it's sort of like their their branded sign.
Yeah, we can't change that. So like they're they're actually yellow on black that they have. That's not necessarily something that's in compliance with that, but the lighting itself, the way that they put the lighting on their ground and everything else about their signage lighting has to be within a certain lumens and pelvis. It has to be, they have to send that information in before they can even put that.
So do we not said doll, is this, there's a Dollar General when you drive into Alpine? Is this the same business that would be on? That's a bright sign. That is a really bright sign. And so I, my thoughts are, it doesn't matter if it's a Dollar General or a Walmart or a big grocery store, they're likely to all produce trash traffic. Light pollution, noise.
This lot is also directly opposite of Parkinher Edition. I don't think there's anybody here from Parkinher Edition. So they're. Yeah, they will be looking at the front of the store. We'll be looking at the back of the.
Yeah. Yeah, I should have a question. This is a genuine question. The case probably is being in the way. So so I think it mentions, right? So if you try to rezonate part of our residential neighborhood and put some junk in the middle that nobody wants, you would have had to notify us. They have a meeting, but through this annexation loophole, we're able to be just as strong on us like bam, there's a Dollar General in the whole neighborhood. You don't get any notification until it's time for replating of the lots. So no meeting like this can ever take place. They don't have any say in what is developed in our neighborhood. So the rezoning just happens just sort of like by loophole, even though it's like in our front yards and backyards.
Well, it wasn't intentional. We followed the state law outside.
I'm not asking whether you follow the law, but the law is that you can just basically find a loophole and wreck the character of our neighborhood.
Again, we weren't, we weren't finding a loophole.
But the law permits you to wreck the character of your neighborhood.
Pretty much. I mean, I, you know, would have loved to provide information in your neighborhood, but it's just I followed it.
I'm not accusing you of not following the law. I think it's funny that everyone in the neighborhood is unhappy about it and everyone showing up for this replating meeting. But I think everyone would have shown up for a rezoning meeting. So I think if my if my house were to be printed to a strip club, people would show up. But this is like, so if my house were annexed and and the annexation included strip club zoning, then it's like nobody would have any say whatsoever. It was like, well, this is the neighborhood.
Yes.
Can I present some pictures? This is dark sky compliant in the city. Okay. Now, there is a house directly across the street of where this would be. Okay, this is our Dollar General. On the east side, the new one. Okay, imagine, and this is how far we are away. Imagine having to live in this house right here. Because it's literally across the street. Okay. Please don't do this to us. This is the backside of a Dollar General.
That's true.
Okay. Now, even the east side, which does a little bit better job taking care of their grounds, still has trash beyond their parking lot. Okay. So we have, trash is going to fly all over the place from a Dollar General. Okay, this was just taken as of recently, this was taken this morning as a matter of fact. This was taken recently, even though this is dark sky compliant. It doesn't mean it's going to be dark.
Right, and they have special, yeah, I mean, like we said, their their signs don't necessarily have to comply if it's a logo sign. Okay. Shall we?
Some of the dollar stores have hours, seven to midnight.
Why?
Others have hours, eight to ten, Monday through Monday.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, okay, sorry. Okay. So we said that the concern was it is that the hours, the operation hours that you're essentially seven days a week. And then, and and I'll let Amit.
Any concerns you'd like to address or ask?
Since I'm first, I agree. So I'll just, I'll just say that it's, to me, this I know the area, it's residential, it's always been quiet instead of pop something like that down right in the middle of essentially all housing, probably is not the intent that we were looking for here as far as the growth going, but I mean, those are, those are mine, that would be my main concern being a resident in that area. As a resident of Alpine, I will agree. I think three dollar stores is more than enough for this town. I don't know why we need that that sort of business keep growing and you just see that happening in smaller towns and not necessarily with the economic development that I would agree with. That's about it. I said.
I have a couple of questions also. Sorry, my questions came in later. Do we know, I don't know if it matters, but do we know if this is one of the other Dollar General? Like, is one going to close down? Or is it just moving or is it a brand new one? There will be four.
It's hard, it's hard to say. They didn't tell us plans about that. So many of their building plans. Our job is to verify that it meets the code. And I mean, it's not really our place to stop it just because there's others.
And so just to clarify, the the reason why the neighbors weren't notified before, like in the other ones that we've had, we saw the paper with all the neighborhood names on it that, you know, have gave their opinion. That's because of the annex?
So it's because we follow a chapter 43, subchapter C3 of the local government code, which says that we have to publish it in paper. There's timeframes. We did it both times. We posted it on our website. We just followed all the other requirements. It was completely, I completely understand why.
Yeah.
They're upset.
And that's.
It wasn't intentional.
Is that how we get the names for the other ones? Because it's posted somewhere or is there somebody that actually goes out and speaks to the people in the neighborhood?
All of our legal notices are published. We do send out notices for replats and rezoning, things of that nature. Again, it was just following the processes the state law provides and it didn't say that we needed to send letters, so.
So can we still send letter? I mean, would it help to send letters now before the recently? Would it make sense or is that pretty much everybody will steer the letter back?
It sounds like a government undercover thing trying to sneak something into the city, you know, basically.
Exactly.
Thank you.
And it's just, I think it's outrageous, in my opinion. And we definitely don't need another store out there. You know, they can't keep what they have now stocked, so it's ridiculous.
Well, it's up to the commission whether or not to approve a recommendation. Let's just say, for example, that you all denied it. We would then reach out to our city attorney, make sure that legally, you know, when it's presented to council with the best avenues. So once planning and zoning typically, if they vote to not approve a recommendation, city council usually has to have supermilitary in the back.
Yeah, that's what happened when the planning and zoning presented that it would not have a fourth gaming room. And they said, no, we're going to put a cap on the numbers and we're not going to have it. It goes to city council. They didn't listen to a word P and Z said.
Right.
Opened it anyway, competed with local businesses, had with this and it's doing damage to American Legion. It took away customers. So I appreciate that they voted correctly, but the city turned a blind eye.
And the best thing to do is reach out to a council member.
Which I did. And I was told by two, my councilwoman and the the next one over that they are not, both of them said, we are not the ethics police. In other words, they don't have to vote ethically on my behalf ever.
Okay, would you like to say?
No, I mean, I'm in agreement with everything that's being said. And I'm also surprised that the owners or their agent isn't here to speak. It's like.
We've had this issue before.
Yeah.
It's just like the dinner rooms, they don't show up.
So it's not important.
Okay.
I mean, this is a backdoor rezoning essentially. I mean, it's not legally, you, I mean, it sounds like you obey the law, but it sounds like this is a backdoor rezoning without a meeting. And I'm just wondering, is the city council powerless to prevent the backdoor rezoning that happens under cover of night when no one's paying attention?
I think you need to go, you, the best thing for you to do is to go to attend a city council meeting and bring this up over there.
Yes.
So at this point, I'm going to close the floor to any more discussion and we're going to go on to the action item. Gio, can I ask you to read the action item again, please?
Yes, action item six A is approve a recommendation in city council to approve a replat application to allow applicant force Apple 118 LLC a replat. Horse Apple one eighteen LLC a replat for the purpose of consolidating lots for commercial retail development. The property in question is located in nineteen eleven North State Highway one eighteen. The record property owner is Horse Apple one eighteen LLC.
Okay, thank you, Geo. All right, so we have an action item. We've had a discussion. And so now it asks for. A motion to pass. You have a motion? Okay, so for lack of motion, this action item dies. Thank you very much.
So in in a sense, and. Just to be clear, is this also? A recommendation not to approve?
Yes.
But it's like, as Geo said. We're not the last stand.
Yes.
And now the pressure's on the city council, right?
Planning and zoning did not recommend it. Requires super majority for them to.
And you can find a super majority?
Um, usually a three, so if there's five voting members.
Okay.
Thanks for coming and make your voice heard.
Thank you very much.
Oh, yeah, it's surprising to me.
I think this is the most exciting P and Z we've had in nine.
Well, we appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes. If we really know, it was first time around, it was. And we would have saved everybody a lot of money, I think.
Again, thank you for coming. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
At this time, I'd like to uh, open up the table to more members comments. And I'll start on my left.
I don't have any comments about this in particular, but if we want to resume a workshop anytime.
I'll bring that up.
Yeah, no, I'm doing, but the workshops.
Um, I think that we. Should recommend maybe that. The city council, next time this happens, that we go above and beyond and notify all of the. The the residents in that area, because obviously in some areas when you're when you're out, let's say past Gary Queen or something. There's really no one around. And anyone's going to be aware of that, but this this particular, I looked at it on the map and it was, yeah, I know the areas. Right in the middle of residential though, essentially, even though it is so commercial, so and I know that everyone did their job, but it's.
I mean, I'd agree.
I as a homeowner, I would. A weather would be good. So and I will also say, not everyone subscribes to the avalanche.
So on that note, for our agenda for the next meeting. Uh, I already spoke to you about the hand. Doing a workshop on the manual, right?
Yes.
Okay, can we also add to the agenda? Uh, I think it's. An agreement where that we should have a rule that letters go out to. Everyone concerned around a zoning or.
Annexation.
Annexation.
Yes.
If we can have that on the agenda for next time, please.
Anything else? That after we work on that workshop to another one where. Um, I know that a lot of people are concerned about the permit fees and how high they are. Compared to other towns. When I was on city council, I was told. That the fees were compatible for Stockton. And. There's more in other places, but they are not from what I hear.
Is that something we can discuss? Do you have a planning and zoning?
I can answer that. Uh. The new building official, Edgar Devaney and I have been working on a new fee schedule and it will be presented to council very soon. Um, we have heard the voices of the community and we also, for the short time that I've worked in the building services department. Um, I know that our fee schedule is wrong and so a lot of the fees will be reduced. So just so you know. Um, and you can also let other people know that we are working on it. Um, and we we are aware that some things need to be adjusted.
Yeah.
Can we can we see a copy of that before it goes to city?
I, you know, I don't see why not in a way. It depends how fast we get it back because we were already gonna have it scheduled for council consideration at next meeting. But we kind of went back to the drawing board, so we were gonna put it in the second meeting in October, which was that before you all.
I'm just saying that because in the past it did come through through planning and zoning before it was.
I I think.
Okay, look, can we put that on the agenda, please? Is there anything else you all would like to uh, discuss at our next meeting?
Well, we're getting close.
I would like to discuss, um. The we talked about this briefly, the historic district maps. Um, I would like to reevaluate and start talking about that if it's. Uh, we do have a speaker coming in from Historic Association just to talk Q and A on historic districts and if they would be. Even if it would be advantageous for Alpine to have historic districts, but before twenty twenty, there were talks for three years in planning and zoning on establishing historic districts. And then it came to a screeching halt. And so maybe we repick that back up. Better.
Okay.
I think they did a bunch of work. Yeah, they did a bunch of work for years on it.
So you can get this person on top of this?
Yes.
We did for a long, long time.
Okay, can we get that put on the?
What what version you want to discuss? Possibility of a historic.
Right. And we did, I think what they decided is that the the map recommendation was too broad. And so.
But we are. I think the last meeting we had on this, if I remember correctly, was that we cut that back. And then. We never did discuss, I think, over here.
Oh, oh, that was so that was three years ago?
Yeah, it's been a long time since we discussed anything on this story.
Okay, let's let's put that.
Is there somewhere we can look up that up?
Yeah, Geo has the um, can send off the minutes.
Yeah, and they're on the website as well.
Right.
You would see on there where it was on the agenda.
Could you give us the date? You can email that to us.
You emailed to me and I can port it back to you, Geo, and then you can send it to. I don't think. I can send it.
Okay.
I can reply.
Last thing, uh. I don't know if you if you want to. Uh, explore it any further, uh, but I did get more information regarding the gaming rooms. Uh, particularly how Odessa and other cities are. Uh, handling it. Do you and I haven't gained information from them, so I have a stack. Do you want me to? You want to talk about it in our next meeting?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Okay. All right, could you put that also on our agenda, please?
It was discuss the gamer warning?
Oh, yes, just a continuation for the discussion.
And and what is the the date for next meeting?
Wednesday, it should be the twenty. I'm sorry, fourth Monday.
Fourth Monday, okay.
Twenty-fourth of next month?
Okay.
And, um. Uh, please bring your copies of your handbook with you at the next meeting. Uh, if you've made any. Changes or anything you'd like to add or delete. Uh, we can discuss it at that time, okay? And, um. I'll make copies of mine. If you want to make copies of yours and we can just exchange it and.
Do you have a digital copy? At that?
Of this?
Of your handbook?
I know. I can make a Xerox if you want. No, I like paper. I like to write on it, but. But anyway, let.
Would you send that out to you?
And so, because I would like to get this handbook.
It's a really great name.
On to other issues. Uh, anything else before adjourn? Okay, well, thank you very much for coming. It's great to see you all. And, uh, at this point, we're adjourned.